February the twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, to order at this time. I'd like to invite everybody to please stand as we have an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sheriff. It's powerhead. Our heavenly Father, thank you so much for the opportunity to come and work with our commissioners, our department heads, and our public to do what's best for this county. I pray that you lay, uh, lay wisdom and knowledge on our commissioners and the decisions that they make. God, please bless us throughout the week, throughout the day. I gotta ask these things in your, your, your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. At this one, we have no public hearings. We have no public comment from citizens, uh, no awards of presentation, but I, we do have some elected and appointed officials here. Judge Brooks, anything at this time?
Page's going up in four hours.
Looking good?
We're excited, yes.
Good deal.
And I do want to say, thank you so much for all the efforts that you have put towards that.
Yes, we do greatly, we do greatly appreciate that.
We have definitely made use of the probate judge, in case y'all wonder.
We, we getting our money's worth this weekend.
We getting our money's worth, that's right.
Mr. Patterson?
Thank you, Commissioner. Everyone today, um, I wanted to give you all an update on the twenty-four total bills. We've had twenty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-five total payments that totaled seventeen million ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. We lack eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars collecting, which we will do. It just takes a little time during this period. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Any questions for Chuck on that real quick? We're good. Ms. Tammy with Katz? Susan?
Good.
Sheriff?
I'd like to invite y'all to come and look at the chapel whenever you get a chance. We've, uh, we've done some rearranging, put some new furniture in there, uh, and set it up to be a little bit more than a chapel. Help, uh, we want to get started, uh, doing some continuing education programs for our inmates. And so when you get a chance, come over and check it out.
Thanks, Sheriff. Kevin? Lynn?
A little later on.
Okay. Eric, anything with you, buddy?
Good.
Okay, let's go move on to the agenda. Uh, you have the consent agenda approval for minutes for February the sixth, twenty twenty-five workshop, and February the seventh, I'm sorry, February the eleventh, regular meeting. Those were emailed to you, uh, entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion by Ben.
Second.
Have a second by Tommy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Under old business, uh, we have considerations to change the managing chart workforce classification for the Engineers Department. I know we've done a lot of work back and forth on this, Lynn, and I think we finally got down to maybe what we can all live with.
Well, we're getting there. We're gonna do
We're getting there.
We're just gonna do one today.
And I, I, Karen and I, Rachel Mary, we all sat down, uh, I guess day before yesterday, or, yeah. Yesterday was yesterday. It goes in a hurry. But, uh, we're going from our RBS, which was our Road and Bridge Superintendent. It's just a reclassification to a Road and Bridge Foreman. Um, Jason Walker is basically my Road and Bridge. We used to have two. We used to have a north and a south, and we basically dropped that one, um, and we still have it on the list. I'd like to reclassify that Road and Bridge Superintendent to a Road and Bridge Foreman, so.
So you heard Lynn's request this morning to classify one position from a Road and, Road and Bridge Superintendent to a Road and Bridge Foreman?
Yes. And that's on our organizational chart, and we got a, I think there's fifty, um, employees on that list, and we're, I think, right now at forty-two on our capacity right now, and that's just one of those vacant positions, so.
I'm totally confused. Just putting that out there for you. We've seen so many different ideas that's been tossed around, and now we're down to one.
Well, I'm doing just one now. We're, we're, we're working on the other.
All right. Now, is, this is a new hire, or we're moving someone to that position?
It could be a, it could be a transfer.
Okay, and or both?
And or both, yes, ma'am.
All right, and, but we know when we do whatever we're doing, that this person's going to do that job.
That's right. It'd be that, that, that'd be the, the duty of that person that takes that job. Because a lot of times, anyway, long story short, we have a lot of people that, and they're just doing different things, and we actually what they're classified as, as doing, and you've seen that in the past. We've got a lot of work to do there. It's a lot of work to be involved in this, um, and with, with, there's a lot of headaches we're going to be going through to get, get, to get there, but we are getting there, though.
All right, and, and one more thing, and this is for my benefit only, oh, because I really don't know. What, what will this person be responsible for?
It's gonna be more of our bridge and maintenance, maintenance side.
Maintenance, okay, so, but we're not gonna name them as maintenance. We're saying they're
Just like a regular Road and Bridge Foreman like we have already. We worked out a few of those positions.
And how many foremans then will that make us in your department?
We have a right-of-way foreman, but that, in, in that position, I believe there'll be five. There'll be five Road and Bridge Foremans.
And we currently have four?
Four right now.
Any more questions for Lynn? This time I'd entertain a motion to reclassify from a Road and Bridge Superintendent to a Road and Bridge Foreman.
Yes.
In his managing chart. I would entertain a motion for that.
Make a motion to
Have a motion from Tommy.
I'll second it.
Have a second from Robbie. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. You want to wait to the other?
Yeah, I'll just wait.
Uh, under new business, the announcement of positions aspiring for Covington County Board of Recreation, there's been some questions brought up with that. I would take that we consider this at a later date in time, uh, until we get a few questions answered about some, some things that have been brought up. That would be my recommendation on it. We can act on this if you would like to, but that would be my recommendation, because there has been some questions that have been brought up for us. Would you like to act on that at this time? Announcement of a board vacancy for Covington County Department of Human Resources, that is also on page two. We know Mr. Charles Willis has passed away, and the DHR a lot of times does bring in some recommendations. We've not heard anything back from them, but we'll reach out with them, because his, uh, his appointment would have been until twenty twenty-seven. So we were waiting kind of here back from them, unless y'all have an appointment y'all would like to make.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, um, as other boards are, we as a commission, wouldn't we have the opportunity, though, to suggest if we had someone, especially coming from Mr. Corson's district,
Yes.
that if he knew, knows someone that he feels would be a good person?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would want to wait, though, and see what names they come up with, because, I mean, the continuity on that board, you know, Mr. Bush was explaining how important that is, so.
And they're very, they're a very active board. I know just talking with Mr. Bush and some of them, they're a very, very active, involved board.
And I feel like with his experience, he'll come up with a, you know, a good person to fill Mr. Willis's shoes.
So I would, I would recommend again, we consider this. Okay, consider county levies for alcohol licensing on page three and four of your packet. This is something that we have to do every year to stay kind of in compliance with the state of Alabama. Uh, it kind of sets, I guess, basically our fees that we charge for licenses of establishments. Is that correct, Ms. Karen?
That's correct.
We do go, go ahead and, and do the maximum amount allowed by the state. So ours is the very maximum of what we charge for a, a retail liquor license. At this time, I would love to entertain a motion to continue this license.
I'll make a motion that we continue the license.
Have a motion from Robbie, second from Tommy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The next thing is consider recommendation for a restaurant retail liquor license at the Twisted Ternit. Twisted Ternit. That is out on Highway eighty-four going toward, um, off, on the left right there. It is actually in Mr. Robbie Weaver's district. Robbie, you have any recommendations on that?
No, not at this time.
Okay, this time I would entertain a motion to approve the license.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Have a motion from Robbie.
I'll second it.
Have a second from Ben. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next is, uh, E, consider out-of-state travel for the sheriff. You remember when the sheriff come up here, and he's got three different classes that, um, his employees will be going to. He's gonna pay, he's recommended gonna pay for it out of discretionary funds. We talked about it in the workshop. At this time, I'd entertain a motion, unless you have any more questions for the sheriff, to approve the out-of-state travel for these employees.
I make a motion that we approve the, the Kimball's Users Conference for now. And hold off on the other two.
So I have a motion from Robbie that we approve the out-of-state travel for the Kimball Conference.
Is this the one where the, the jail, just for the jail?
The Kim, the Kimball's Conference is for, uh, uh, our personnel that actually use, uh, they're not for my, my clerks within the team. The other ones are actually training for
For officers.
And one of them is a jail officer, and that training is next week.
My concern that we did, I believe, discussed a little bit about that one was that it is an actual food show. It's not like they're training to learn how to do anything. They're just really observing the different items that's for sale. That's what this Kimball company, you know, we talked about what really good cornflake candy they have, because, give a little plug here, because we sold it at the business, so it's really good. That's the only reservation that I have towards that. I just, my personal opinion, and, and I, and you, you all do a great job, so this is my personal opinion, is that I don't understand why someone from the jail, and I know you said one of these ladies is, but I would have thought that Ms. Jenny or the other one, you know, that they would kind of been there.
These ladies actually work the, the programs and stuff that keep up with the billing and, uh, you know, the supply and all that. Ms. Ms. Jenny and all, they just distribute the stuff out, but they have to learn the software, and we've got some newer people that don't know that software. It is a, it is a Kimball's Conference. I, I know that, but that it's there to train the, the people that, that use it.
Under the conference topics, it says team finance, team self-audiating, FCC ruling, updates, communication options, and TOM system menus one oh one, hub two point oh, and more.
Yes, there's actually classes that I have to
And all of that is used within the jail?
Yes.
Any more questions for the sheriff on that one? Say we had a motion from Robbie to approve the travel for the Kimball Conference that will be March fourth and fifth in the Grange, but to hold off on the other two at this time. Had a motion from Robbie. Do we have any second on that?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Ms. Lynn Holm. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And Sheriff, you want to bring the others back up?
I'll have to cancel one of them. It's already, I've already paid for the class. I'll just cancel it. It'll be, it'll be before the next.
The other one about the, the day, if you want to look at that again.
Well, we're on this topic too, and I know y'all do share, go to a lot of local, um, trainings. And I also saw on our ACCA calendar, and, and maybe all of your COs have already been, I, I feel like they have, but you know, there were several classes that are available throughout the year for these corrections officers to go to, and, um, I would encourage the ones that have not been, I would think that would be an excellent choice. They're impractical. And I guess in a state like that, we don't have to approve it anyway, do we?
And then, do you have that calendar blanked?
That's what I was getting to.
The, the, the class that was offered, uh, in Tennessee was a free class. They only had the paper, but the lodging and everything, and it's an interview and interrogation class. Those classes, they don't come by very often.
Those classes you're talking about, sorry, under our insurance company, we are required to send two, so we do send two
We do send them to the
That's good to know. That was something I was not aware of. That's, when I was looking at the calendar, I thought, my goodness, here's a great opportunity for us.
Have to check it out to get our insurance.
Any more questions with that? Okay, uh, the next one is consider approval for soliciting a bid of the hot mix asphalt. This is a, well, if Lynn don't, if Lynn don't hurt Kevin before he can get up here. This is an annual bid, correct Lynn?
It is, and it, it just ran out this past month, so we just never knew it.
And it's a, it's an index, so if the asphalt goes up, the price goes up for us, but if it comes down, it does come back down with it, so it's an asphalt index.
It's tied to the asphalt index, and it'll be, uh, based off the month that it's awarded, so, um, and it's just an annual bid, like I said in the workshop, this is a, an annual bid that we can use to issue any purchase order work, and it complies with all the state and local bid laws, so.
You heard Lynn's request. At this time, I would, um, entertain a motion to approve the solicitation of bid for the hot mix asphalt.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Have a motion from Robbie.
I'll second it.
Have a second for Ben. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the next item Lynn is also yours, consider decoration surplus for Engineers Department. That'll be page eighteen in your packet.
And that should be the three Kenworth vehicles, the, uh, Kenworth tractor, uh, trucks, that hauls our, um, lowboy, and then also the, uh, uh, three backhoes, three Caterpillar backhoes. And this will be at the J and Wood Auction, which is their spring sale, which is the, at March eighteenth to the twenty-second, so.
And we'll have the dump trucks ready to replace these.
Yeah, one's already here. We've got one already in, in here now.
And we already have the lowboy, is that correct?
Low, the lowboys. It has been worked on. They had to do some fifth wheel changes to it, but it's, it's here.
So you, you have a list of items Lynn would like surplus at the J and Wood Auction in March?
March eighteenth, yeah.
March the eighteenth. I would entertain a motion to declare these items surplus.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion from Ben.
Second.
Second from Tommy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, down to reports from staff. Lynn, while you're there, would you like to give us report or anything while you, while you're here?
The main reason I'd like to speak on something more important, I think, than anything we're gonna be facing this whole year, is the, uh, the Senate Bill one ten. I've each given you each a, uh, a little handout from the ACCA. And, uh, you know, back in the day, the, um, we had not had, we had not sent a gas tax, just kind of a brief summary of what's kind of gone over the years. The gas tax has not been updated since ninety-two, and then we passed the, the Governor Ivey signed, I think, that law into effect, the Rebuild Act in, uh, twenty nineteen, which initially, it was a three-year phase, six cents first year, and then it works way up to ten cent. And originally, we got about eight hundred and fifty, uh, thousand, now it's a little over, over a million dollars in revenue that we get from that. And that's very important for our, our, our department. But also, um, during the early two thousands, about ten or twelve years ago, uh, twenty-ten, twenty-twelve, somewhere along that, that timeframe, we had what we called the A-Trip program, and it was set in place to, uh, to take care of a lot of, um, bus routes were being detoured a lot because of, of posted bridges. And we replaced, I think, roughly two hundred and ninety bridges statewide during that, that bridge program. All right, since that time, um, now, this Senate bill that, that's on the, that's being considered now, um, at state legislator is Lynn, can I interrupt for a second? Yes.
The bridges you're talking about that was replaced, the two hundred and something, or upgraded, that was to accommodate buses?
Just buses, everything, just, but it was a, it was a, a bridge program. It was a very successful bridge, one of the, very successful in the state's history.
Gotcha.
But now, the Senate bill, what it does, and people aren't going to be educated on this, and I've given some of the, um, news media already a copy, and I'd love for them to look at this and, uh, and really reach out. I want, I want everybody to reach out to our, our state representative and state, and our senator for our, our, our district here about this. If this bill passes, it's gonna be basically, it's gonna, uh, and what the bill does, it's a fifteen-page, uh, bill, and I looked at it this morning, um, online. It's available online. If you'll just, uh, Google Senate Bill, Alabama Senate Bill one ten. And basically what it does, it doesn't change the gross weight of a vehicle, but it's adding ten more percent to the axle. And right now, the, the state law legal limit right now is forty, forty tons. If this bill passes, it'll go to forty-four tons, and that's huge.
Per axle.
Per axle, although the total weight doesn't change, but if you, if you take a, a trailer or whatever, and you put all the weight on two axles, and up to the legal limit, that puts additional ten, ten more percent of tonnage on our, our roadways and our bridges. That's gonna, it's gonna cause about another three hundred and fifty bridges in the state to be posted because of this, this bill. It's gonna, it's gonna cause, it'll, it'll cause the state to post another three hundred and fifty bridges in the county system. There's other issues with this. Um, it's gonna cost the state about a hundred and fifty million dollars a year on additional maintenance because of this increased, um, deal, and that's what a lot of this, I think, so he, he's looking at it up there now, but, uh, and you can see it there as well, but, um, it's gonna create a big burden on the county, and it's gonna create a, you know, a bigger burden on our deteriorating roads already. We know what a situation our roads. And if a lot of people don't understand about Covington County, what I'd like to discuss is the disparity about Covington County that we have. Back during the gas tax, we put together all our, our info, and back in, uh, twenty-twelve, when we did that, Covington County is in a deficit of about ten million dollars every year, every year, to, just to keep up the, the, the infrastructure that we have right now. And with us being fourth in infrastructure, and our, our gas tax, everything's based on the population base, and we're about thirty-four, thirty-fifth province state as far as population, so there's a big disparity in our infrastructure cost and where we are budget-wise. And this is just another nail in the coffin if this bill passes to us. And I'd really consider that everybody, and I'm sure y'all already have reached out to our, our, our local elected officials on, on the, on the state level to discuss this, and that's my main reason, just to, to make sure they vote no on this, on this issue. It's a, it's very important. I don't think they've, um, the, the impact is, is huge on this. There's a thing, a thing called easel range, and the way I, way I look at it, on easel range, that's an equivalent single load, um, axle load rating is what that is, and that's a, a measure of how a road gets deteriorated by, by a, um, by vehicles. So if you're adding ten percent to an, to a, to a load or an axle load, in ten years, you're, you're, you're dug, you're a hundred percent more than what that, that road was to see. And that just shows you the disparity of what's gonna happen in our, our road system and deterioration, how much faster it's gonna come up. The handout kind of shows a, a list of the, the expenses and changes that, that's gonna happen because of this bill, and it affects every taxpayer in, in the, in the state. I mean, it's just not, um, for the logging and trucking industry, this, this affects everybody. And I'd really consider, everybody really taking the effort to reach out to our, our state representative and, and state senator to, to go over this and express their concerns about this. Um, it's very important to me. It's very important to our, our county association, Engineers Association, and to the, uh, the County Commission Association. There's a lot of good podcasts. You can, you can Google some of those too. Sunny Brass Field and the State Chief Engineer, Ed Austin, um, discussed this in length, and they do a really good job explaining it. But I would really recommend that if y'all have not reached out, I think most of you have, but if you haven't, I'd, I'd recommend that you, you'd reach out in, on my behalf, because I've already reached out to them as well, that, um, to vote no on this issue.
That podcast he mentioned is the one I sent to everybody on Friday.
Yeah, it's an, it's an important issue, and, um, I just, uh, really, really expressed, I can't express enough how much it, how important it is to vote no on this, on this issue. You think roads are bad now, um, it's just, they're, they're just only gonna get worse if this bill passes.
You and I discussed yesterday, it, if, if it passes and the log trucks are able to increase, all the other trucking companies are gonna be like, hey, why can't we do it? So then every semi in the state is gonna have an increase in axle weight, more deterioration, state roads, county roads, whatever they travel on.
And right now, the state law, I think, is, is forty, is forty tons. It's gonna increase it to forty-four tons. Yeah, well, what's four tons? It makes a big difference.
Does, uh, do, do interstates have a different law than a state road?
A, a little bit. Their, their designs are just a little bit different, yes. So we can really, we're actually limited.
This law affect the interstate? I mean, can they override, can they override the interstate law?
It's, it's, it affects everything, because, um, just like those are dump trucks, we come back, um, more of the state highways and we do the interstate system when we're loaded up with our dump trucks. So, um, I just, just express the concern that I have for my engineering, uh, county, our fellow county engineers about this. It's, it's, it's a big deal, and, uh, I've never seen a, a bill that really impacts us more, that's gonna be detrimental to our, our infrastructure than what this one right here is, so.
Your question with the interstates, years ago, when I drove a truck, a dump truck for Don Bullard, we'd have to go to Calera. You could take the interstate.
State road.
But when you came back, you had to take thirty-one.
Yep.
Because of the, the weight restrictions on the interstate.
That's my question is, that, does this law override what the interstate, what, you, you understand what I'm saying?
It's gonna impact it, I don't, I mean.
Because if they're, they're legal on the state road, they'll be illegal on interstate.
It was, I mean, hey, it was illegal then, you know, you couldn't ride on the interstate, but you could on the state road.
I mean, I'm waning, Lynn, I'm not arguing against you. I mean, I'm waning, but, but I don't, I mean, the other that reaching out to our representatives, we can't do much about it.
No, we can't, but I mean, I, but, but we got to, not trying is not an option to me, one percent. We got, we got to make, we got
And I think we all have. I think we all have to, um, expressed our concern to Matthew and Josh, I mean, but, but I'm just saying, we, if it passes, we just have to find a way to live with it, so.
And the percentage of increased revenue that the road department got with the gas tax, just say it's at this percentage, if this passes, it's gonna knock us back down to, you know, losing.
Well, as far as getting the infrastructure, with money having to go, our sources, resources having to go to different things, yes. And that's what the, that, that bullet point that, that you have in front of you, it'll kind of show that. Because like, for on the state level, they got like two hundred million discretionary funds for maintenance of upkeep of their natural, of their bridges. They predict it's gonna cost a hundred and fifty million dollars. This will impact the state a hundred and fifty million dollars. So that's sucking out seventy-something percent of their discretionary funds to handle something they really wasn't expecting to have to handle.
Well, basically on this sheet, it's saying we're gonna need about a million more dollars a year, and you're already saying we're ten million.
Well, I'm, we're ten million in the hole, right. I mean, every year, um, and you can go back and look at the rebuild, and there's, there's a bullet fact sheet for every county, and to show the, uh, the difference in, um, just the upkeep, and the, the, the survey was based on a fifteen-year resurfacing cycle on our, our, our roads, which we can't hardly meet anyway right now because of that. And our, replacing our bridges every fifty years, life cycle. And based off those numbers, um, we, we're gonna have a deficit of about ten million dollars a year, what's needed just to upkeep what we have now in place, so.
Just look at the hell that these two commissioners right here take with almost, she's got over two hundred miles. I got a hundred and eighty of dirt roads in our districts.
And that's not counting the bridges.
Yeah, not counting the bridges.
I mean, that, add that to this, um, you, but you don't want me to get started about it. You really don't. It's, it's gonna take a minute.
Yeah, anyway, it's a, it's a big deal, um, and I like to say, our infrastructure is huge. Like I say, we're, and I, 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 I know I've said this a hundred times, but just to let people know, we rank number one in dirt roads by over a hundred miles than any other county in the state, and we rank second in, uh, bridges only to Tuscaloosa County.
And we're fourth in complete total infrastructure.
And if you need a copy of that, I've got it.
Yeah, overall, we, I figure our weighted infrastructure is about fourth in the state, but yet our, our budget's about thirty, thirty-four, thirty-fifth, so.
Yeah.
That's it, that's all I got.
Total roads, we're ninth.
We're ninth in total roads. We are twenty-eighth in paved roads. We are number one out of sixty-seven counties in unpaved roads.
And you look at the two, uh, senators and representatives that are bringing these up, look at where they live. They don't live in a rural county, mainly rural county like we do, Baldwin County.
But my concern too
How much timber industry is involved in that?
My concern too is the fact that we, and, and we shouldn't, maybe, so let me say it a different way, that the, the weight limits that are on these trucks now, there's no knowledge of. It's not like they're weighed before they leave that logging area.
Lee is only want to keep some, if they stop them, if they stop them.
And how many times, let's just say if you're leaving south of If they stop them. And how many times, let's just say if you're leaving south of, in, in my district, and you're going to, let's say to T R Miller, how many times is the DOT going to be on a county road to even check them? And I don't understand that. I really do not, cannot comprehend how a logger wouldn't want record of how many tons that I have on my truck just for their economic side of it. That makes no sense to me.
They, they get their weight when they get to.
But they've got to trust somebody.
But from there to there, they could pull over, take a few logs off every load and come up.
I mean, do you count the logs if you don't have a?
Ain't nobody doing that, huh?
No, but if you don't.
She saw him.
No, you better hush. But, but if you don't know.
I'd like to see when they unloaded that truck.
If you don't know what's on that truck, that's, do they count the logs? I mean, that may be simple mindedness. I don't know. But I know if I ship a load of pecans somewhere, I'm going to know what leaves my business.
And I, I also is, I think the, the bigger companies, um, have scales, uh, on site. It's the, it's the independent people that are already breaking the laws that are the ones you're going to worry about.
And you're not going to keep them from doing it. There's no place in it.
The logging guys told Michael and I when we met with them, they contract out the trucks usually.
Some, some of them do. I mean, we've got good loggers.
Yes, we do.
We have, we have people that do business in this county that are, that are for the most part trying to do right. But then we have people that also, um.
They're going to get away with what they can.
Rules and they're going to break this rule. I mean.
Yeah. They got a 10% tolerance. And already, in no shape, form, or fashion are we trying to sit up here, Lynn included, and try to demonize this industry. We, we want this industry. It, it's huge for Covington County.
It absolutely is.
But we can't let it destroy what we've worked so hard to keep up. And the other 30 something thousand people in this county have to suffer on these beat up roads.
I am 100%.
I know you are. I'm not, I'm pretty subcired. And I'll, I'll just leave on this note right here. Um, this, it states right here on this right here that we'll have, if this bill passes, we'll have 470, this statewide, we'll have 473 fewer mo, uh, uh, roads resurfaced annually because of this bill. There'll be 348, um, additional bridges that'll be posted or waived because of the bill. And then the increase in, uh, there'll be, uh, in ways to increase about 54 million dollars is what will be the, the, the impact that it's going to have. On the state level, uh, additional 150 million will be needed for, for annual resurfacing state maintained roads on that end.
Well, you know, when we talked with the loggers in here several, several, well, about a year ago now, I guess it was, you know, the only request I felt like that we had was just to let us know, just let us know where you at. That can't be that hard, but that was not something that apparently they were willing to accommodate us with. And the purpose being, if you're on a road and you're going to, you know, there's going to be issues there, before that happens, if we had knowledge of it, we might could do something to help the situation. But like it is, has been, I've got a road right now that they couldn't get in and out of, so they took one of the logs, put it in the ditch. Now we got a driveway that they could, or they've got a driveway, we don't. Well, when you put that tree in the ditch.
And it rains.
And it rains, then there's nowhere for the water to go except to round it and back through the road. Well, now we might could have remedied that had they bothered to call us, but they didn't. And then we've just been on C road, and we know that's been a four-week event that we had to go down there and fix after they dumped boulders.
The day after the, the snowstorm.
At, yeah, on Friday, we were logging after the storm on Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
There was no excuse for that. And it, I'm not against it. I, look, I don't know what this county would do without the forest industry. I absolutely am not. But I just think that there should be a way that we could have knowledge, do whatever it is we can do to help the situation out.
We've asked them to work with us, you know, and it hasn't gone over too well.
No.
You know, so where does that leave us, you know? Back, back to what they don't want us to do.
Right. And you know, the idea was it was call going to cost them money. Well, now I don't know how picking up phone and calling engineering is costing you money, but.
It's costing us money.
Yeah.
I think we all understand there's a major issue with certain things. And I think we understand this bill can be very, very detrimental, the way Lynn explained it to our county roads. I think we'd like Lynn suggested, the best thing to do is reach out to our representative and the senator and just kind of express our concerns of what our concerns as a commission, as for our citizens are with this bill.
The long-term impact is, is, is very bad.
For the county.
Absolutely.
So we took five steps forward. Now does it take us three steps back before finance?
I just think that the county and the logging people could work together better. I do. And I think that's the solution. Um, but I don't know what steps needs to be taken because Michael and Tommy met with them.
Again.
Again. And I don't know that, you know, it moved forward. So, I mean, we're right back. All of the things I've just named have happened since. So obviously it didn't matter.
And we'll take any suggestions that you can come up with.
Right. Well, I'm all about it. Yeah. Cause I want them to stay, you know, that was a threat that was issued that day. Well, we can just move out of Covington County. Well, that's, that's, I, I, that's an idle threat. You know, we need them, but they need us to. We just want our roads protected. That's the bottom line, our bridges.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I'm going to run through this and we'll get the one item I, I did add today. And I'm sorry I missed it right there, but let me go ahead and get the reports from the staff in case they need it out. Uh, Stacy, Chuck, Tammy, Susan, and we just heard from Lynn. The other thing is consider resolution on, this way I can say it is a vacant bill. Robbie brought this to our attention, um, several months ago, where Bullock County has actually imposed a small tax on alternative nicotine devices. Um, it's something that we kind of looked at. You know, we have a alcohol tax, we have a tobacco tax. This right here does not fall under either one of them. This is getting to be a very, very big problem. I would say a simple way with the children being able to get these devices and everything that's affecting the school systems and everything else. The resolution that we have in front of us is something Ms. Arrington, let me find mine, has drafted for us. There it is, to actually send up to have local legislation pass for a 5% increase on alternative nicotine products and THC synthetic substances. Okay? That'd be like your THC gummies, your Delta Eights, all different kind of stuff. And Ms. Arrington, this does not fall upon the merit, is that correct? That's going to be the medical marijuana commission.
Correct. This is going to exclude, um, if that program moves forward and they're able to regulate those medical products under their, um, processes, this would not apply to those products that are otherwise regulated. This would be touching, um, the products that are today unregulated, um, in the marketplace.
And I would, I would love to entertain a motion for us to adopt this resolution. We'll have to get the paperwork and everything go to Matthew Hammond for local legislation. We have to advertise it for three weeks. If anybody has any comments or, or anything they can address the commission about it. But I think it's something that we can do to help our departments and other agencies to benefit and try to combat what's going on in some of the school systems also.
Did you say you already did it for three weeks or you got?
No, we have to after we adopt this resolution.
Okay.
If we adopt this resolution.
If we've not been.
But at this time, you have the resolution in front of you. We've had it for a week or so now when Ms. Arrington got it to us. And I would entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I have a motion from Mr. Robbie Weaver.
I'll second it.
Have a second from Ben. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, commissioners. And is any other discussion by the commissioners itself? We'll start with District One, Mr. Cor.
Sir, I'm good.
Robbie? Lynn?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, wait, wait.
I'll go ahead and say no. She's going to have my time.
I was not prepared yet. Uh, yes, I have two things I'd just like to mention. One, I'm going to need a vote for, the other one not. Somewhere in the near future, um, I would like the commission to, um, think about, talk about, look at whatever the procedure needs to be, about redesigning, um, this is called a staffing plan. I'm, I'm not sure ours is called that, uh, where we name our heads of each thing, and then we know who falls under each.
Kind of like a workforce.
Yeah, a workforce. Yeah, organ, yeah. Everybody apparently has a different one. Uh, this one was just one that was presented. I think you've got a copy of it too, several, maybe a year or so ago from Limestone County. That's, you know, it's a good example. Um, but down the road, I think it's going to be something that's worthwhile to us. And I would really like to put that into a consideration and have a discussion. Uh, the other thing I do have is, uh, we had a request from, uh, Pleasant Homes softball, girls softball team. And I would like to use, um, my, some of my contingency fund. I would, I would think the amount was $250 Karen.
I believe that was.
I believe that was right. Uh, and I would like to use my contingency, some of my money to, for that purpose. Uh, Pleasant Homes girls golf, the softball.
So I'm going to.
It starts, they golf ball.
I'll, I'll split it with her also.
Okay.
You will use 250 yours also or?
No, this is, this is.
25 each, okay.
Yeah. This is, that's great. Thank you, Robbie.
So I will take that as a motion that Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
And Mr. Weaver would like to use part of their contingency money to support the Pleasant Homes girls softball request.
Oh, I will second it.
I have a second from Ben. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Pleasant Homes, never ask for anything ever. And I, I was just excited to know that's who it was. Uh, Ms. Renee Sims, y'all know Ms. Renee.
We do.
Yeah, we do. I told her yesterday and I said, you're going to have to come and accept it and talk to us. She said no.
Okay. With no other businesses this time, we will take a motion from.
I will make a motion to the jurors.
And a second from Robbie. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.